Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay. I'm the Chief Cazi for Council of Court of Alodio and Moore's Praetorium, Auntie Colorado. The acronym is AMPAC. AMPAC is a state-provincial government within the Moroccan Empire. So today, we will continue with the same subject matter. And what's the subject matter? How did the Moors lose the land? And more specifically, how do we get the land back? So today, we'll continuously learn about how to get our land back. So keep in mind, today is Part 7 of a series, alright? So in Part 6, what did we do? We learned about the definition of treaty as it relates to Black's Law Dictionary 4th Edition. And what we learned is that treaty is an international law document. It's a political document of international law. So therefore, Moors must start learning international law in order to enforce said treaty, alright? What else did we learn under the definition of treaty? We learned that a treaty cannot be self-executing. A treaty can only be enforced through your state. It cannot be self-executing. So therefore, you need your state representatives to assist in dealing with any disputes that two nations may have as it relates to a treaty. And if you do not have a state and its state representatives who are elected officials, not self-appointed, then you cannot enforce a treaty, alright? So what else did we look up in Part 6? We read the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1786. And what did we learn in that treaty? We learned just in the preamble itself that the Moors have unfortunately not been following the instructions. We found out right in the preamble that the United States of America and their elected officials were discussing directly with the officials of the Moroccan government. So it was a government duly elected officials speaking to the Moroccan government. So therefore, you had two states talking to each other. So Moors, as of the 21st century, Moors are waking up. How misunderstood and misinterpreted the treaties altogether. On top of that, Article 1 of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1786, what did we learn? That in Article 1, it talks about in order to enforce all the other 25 treaties. It says herein, these 25 treaties, the only way to enforce it, you must be a duly elected representative of your state. So therefore, Moors have been trying to enforce treaties, they never had a state government. We have been incompetent in understanding the interpretations of international law. But that's alright, we're gonna fix it now. Because the matriarchs are learning how to check the boxes. So we'll continuously talk about checking boxes as it relates to the state, alright? So today being Part 7, we'll continuously learn what the colonists, i.e. these people who call themselves white, which is a nom de guerre, or American, which is a nom de guerre, these people who are colonists, you must understand that they are truly cheaply British. Why do I say they're cheaply British? All you gotta do is look up the definition of white in American Standard Dictionary to tell you, cheaply British. However, you must always understand that these cheaply British people are in a feud with who? The Moors. That's why they came up with feudal law. Feudal is a compound word for feud and act. So there's a feud going on the Isles, i.e. a war. And who are the Isles? The Isles are the Moors. So therefore, what is the antonym, the opposite of feudal? It is alodio. Alodio is a compound word for owl, the lodio. Owl, the owl. Alodio means the superior of the land, the sovereign, true sovereign of the land, the de jour, people of the land, the autarchist people of the land, the indigenous people of the land, those who can enforce law based upon their ancient mothers and fathers, all based upon consanguinity, bloodline. The only way to be a sovereign must be from the land and not an immigrant in that land, not an immigrant with an I, not an immigrant with an E, or an expatriate. People who are cheaply British are what you call expatriates coming into this land. They no longer want to be British. So they go onto a nom de guerre called white, a nom de guerre called Caucasian, a nom de guerre called American, a nom de guerre called the United States, not to be confused with the United States of America. So as we go into now Session 7, we must start understanding, that we must start understanding who is the United States versus United States of America. The parties must be known. Listen, in all contracts, you must identify the parties. So the parties are Moors and United States of America. The parties are Moors and United States of America. We learned that in the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. So today, we'll continue to understand more about who are these parties. And most importantly, what acts of Congress did the colonists do to undermine the Moors by trying to undermine said treaties, alright? So we'll talk about that today. Alright, so we must always understand that the Moors are at war with the colonists. But what type of war? It's a war with the pen. It's a war with the pen. It's also a war with bullets. Because the colonists are killing unconscious Moors on the street every day. Because they have them classified as aliens and subjects. And anytime you list it as an alien or subject, that means you don't have rights, you only have privileges. So therefore, you can be killed on the street because you don't have a nationality. It's because you cannot enforce treaties. You can't enforce a constitution. You can't enforce conventions. You can't enforce declarations unless you have a nationality and you have a state to protect. So today, we'll learn a little bit more about how powerful this pen is as it relates to the acts of Congress and what the matriarchs must do to use this pen to get your sons and daughters back into the law of the land as nationals, free nationals. So therefore, you must understand, Moors are still Moorish subjects until they have a state. Once they have a state, they immediately become Moorish nationals. You cannot be a Moorish national according to international law until you have a state. And that state is because the matriarchs get together with a pen and that birth record becomes the constitution. The constitution is a birth record that's a birth of a nation. It's a political document. You must understand that, that must be known. So therefore, after that, you have your birth records, etc. You must start checking the boxes, mothers. You must have your nationality, because without nationality, you can't even create a state. And from there, you create your constitution, your seal, your flag, elections, inaugurations, birth records, mothers. Scribe the birth records to bring your Moorish subjects back into the Moorish nation through a political document. All these are political documents. Open allegiance to what? The mother. The mother, the natural-born autarchist mother, the Moor. That's how you do it with a pen, open allegiance back to mother. The Motherland, what's the Motherland? The estate, listen, Moors. The estate, estate is the Moroccan flag. That's the e-state that represents Eve, evolution. It represents Earth. Remember, the letter E is the fifth letter of the alphabet. That's your five points of life. It represents you. E as in Earth, E as in Eve, E as in evolution. E as in the e-state is Mother Earth. And now Eve and Earth must come back together, that's your 2X chromosome, coming together, your 2X chromosome. That's the fallopian tube, your egg. You have a nation inside of you. But what the colonists did is say, soon as those eggs are born, they're immediately born into forced servitude as an alien or a subject. So mothers must understand in order you now to bring your Moors, your Moorish sons and daughters, you gotta check the boxes. So we'll talk about that today, alright, as a solution. No use in pointing out problems unless we talk about solutions, the de jour solution based upon international law. So let's get started. Alright, so first things first, why do I keep saying we have to have a state? I keep putting emphasis on the word state. Why is that? It's because the Moors have not really understood the fundamentals of international law, i.e. the instructions that mothers must comprehend. Because your sons and daughters that call themselves conscious Moors are not conscious of what international law is. Your so-called conscious Moors been out here enforcing domestic constitutions and domestic statutes. You know why they enforcing domestic statutes and domestic constitutions? It's because by default, they're already admitting they don't have their own law. Think about it. Moors are confessing without even realizing, they're confessing they don't have a state, they don't have a nation, they don't have a constitution to enforce of their own. They're violating international law, alright? So that must be known. Let's go into what's called the Vienna Convention of 1969. We'll go to Article 1. We've read this before in the past, but let's read it again because things must be redundant. That way, the mothers really start to understand, overstand, and then understand, alright? So let's be slightly redundant today, alright? So we can have the mothers read Article 1 of the Vienna Convention of 1969.
Article 1, scope of the present convention. The present convention applies to treaties between states.
Stop. One more time, mother, read it three times, please.
Article 1, scope of the present convention. The present convention applies to treaties between states. Article 1, scope of the present convention. The present convention applies to treaties between states.
Stop. Treaties are between states. It's simple. That's the first rule of the instructions. If you read the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1786, first article talks about the rules. You must be a duly elected official. Okay, mother, if we can read Article 2.
Um, okay, I'll read half of it. Oh, Article 2, use of terms. 1, for the purposes of the present convention. A, treaty means an international agreement concluded between states in written form and governed by international law, whether embodied in a single instrument or in two or more related instruments and whatever is particular designation.
Stop. So allow me do my basic strict sense interpretation. It's really simple, watch this. For the purpose of the present convention. A, treaty means an international agreement concluded between the states, not individuals. States in written form and governed by international law. So who governs treaties? International law. We should tell Moors immediately, what should we be studying? International law, not domestic constitutions that belong to a colonist, not studying state statutes that belong to a colonist. But the reason why the Moors study the state's colonists, or should I say, the statutes of the colonists is because Moors are not admitting that they don't have their own laws. Whether embodied in a single instrument or in two or more related instruments and whether it's particular designation. So therefore, we must understand the basic fundamental understanding, immediately. Article 1 and Article 2 is already talking about states. Why do I keep putting emphasis on states? Because it should become the main word, term in every Moor's vernacular. That is the truth. If Moors aren't talking about states, then they by default are letting the whole world know they're incompetent. That is the truth. Let's continue to prove it. Reference point, okay, we have another mother read Part B.
Part B, ratification, acceptance, approval, and accession. Mean in each case the international act so named whereby a state establishes on the international plane its consent to be bound by a treaty.
Okay, watch this. Moors want to be bound by the treaties. They want the United States of America, not to confuse the United States to be bound by the treaties. Then what do you need in order for someone to be bound by the treaty? You need a state. That's simple. Let's continue with the basic instructions. Section C.
C, full power means a document emanating from the competent authority of a state designating a person or persons to represent the state for negotiating, adopting, authenticating the text of a treaty for expressing the consent of the state to be bound by a treaty or for accomplishing any other act with respect to a treaty.
Stop. Thank you, mother, for the reading. Section C says it all. It really summarizes the instructions that Moors have not been following. Watch this. Section C, full powers, Moors want full powers. Watch this. Means a document emanating from the competent authority. What's that mean? What's the document? What document are you talking about? You must have a state and a constitution in order to enforce said treaty. Watch this. C, full powers means a document emanating from the competent authority. What's competent mean? Your authorized official, you've been elected and not self-appointed, of a state designating a person or persons to represent the state for negotiating. Moors want to negotiate treaties with the colonists. Can't do it, not unless you have a state. Adopting or authenticating the text of a treaty for expressing the consent of the state to be bound by a treaty. So Collins is trying to say the United States should be bound, and guess what? Moors don't have their own state to force any nation around the world to be bound to a treaty. Everybody has to have a state. Moors have to have a state. United States of America has to have a state, not to be confused with the United States, two different entities. Who's the only party that don't have a state? Moors. That's not to be taken as a negative, it's time for Moors to start comprehending international law. We gotta fix this, especially the mothers. Mothers, matriarchs, and your matriarchal council have to fix this because you're the legislator. It's up to the mothers to fix this because the colonists attacked you. Now you must teach your sons and daughters who are not following international law to understand it's about the state. Let's continue. So, adopting or authenticating the text of a treaty for expressing the consent of the state to be bound by a treaty or for accomplishing any other act with respect to the treaty, any act that Moors want to do, they must be the competent authorized parties, meaning you must be elected. That means you have checked all these boxes. Makes you competent. If Moors can't check all these boxes, etc., then you are incompetent according to international law. The instructions are simple. Let's continue, go ahead, mother.
D, reservation means a unilateral statement, however phrased or named, made by a state when signing, ratifying, accepting, approving, or ascending to a treaty whereby it purports to exclude or to modify the legal effect of certain provisions of the treaty in their application to that state.
Good, okay, watch this. Section D, Moors, reservations. Moors want to reserve their rights, all rights reserved. They put on all their documents. It don't mean nothing unless you have a state. Let me prove it. Reservation, all rights reserved, means a unilateral statement. What's the unilateral statement? Your unilateral statement is your constitution that created the state. Moors by their own free will under post-lumineum can create their own state and constitution and start checking the boxes. That's what unilateral means, that we can do this on our own because we're the true sovereigns of the land. That must be known. Continue with the reading. However phrased or named, what's that mean? You can name it whatever you want, etc., because you're the sovereign. Made by a state, only the state can create it. Watch this. AMPAC came together as a collective under a unilateral collective group, we scribe the constitution. That constitution now created elected officials, we had elections, then we had inauguration, and that created the state. So therefore, you must understand, the people can come together and create the population of people, not persons, people who have a nationality can create their state. They're authorized to do that. What are they authorized to do? For any signing, ratifying, accepting, approving, or sending, asseding to a treaty whereby purports to exclude or to modify the legal effect of certain provisions of the treaty and their application to that state. It's that easy. You want to reserve all rights reserved? You need a state. Let's continue, mother, thank you.
E, negotiating state means a state which took part in the drawing up and adoption of the text of the treaty.
Alright, so Moors want to negotiate. They want to use Council of Court, Council Notification Access, they're negotiating. They're trying to get themselves out of disputes. Understanding they're saying we're a separate nation. United States is a separate nation, Moors is a separate nation. Okay, Moors, prove it. Where's your state? The United States is saying, United States saying, we checked all these boxes, we have everything on this list. Where's your stuff, Moors? You want to negotiate? Where's your state? You want to negotiate? Where's your state? Moors have failed to comprehend international law. But we're gonna continuously read it so we can come up with solutions. No use in pointing out problems unless you have solutions. Solutions were written in 1969. We're in the 21st century.
That's what international law was about, was 1969?
This particular treaty, which is the Vienna Convention, was fully ratified by the nations around the world who came together and signed this, which the Vienna Convention of 1969 is a treaty itself. Keep in mind, treaties are supreme law of the land. This is supreme law of the land. Moors cannot be excused from following the supreme law of the land. Keep in mind, we were conquered. Now that we're coming back from a reawakening, reparations, restoration, right? Post-lumineum, we must still abide by international law because that's the new law of the land. Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, mother.
What kind of the answer, but I guess it's...
Speak on.
I have a question, so in regards to the Vienna Convention, there were no Moors present at that time, which is no, because...
There were no more what?
There were no Moors in the Vienna Convention to sign off on the Vienna Convention.
The answer is yes and no. I'll explain. Morocco signed off on this Vienna Convention in 1972, okay? Whereas Morocco, the Kingdom of Morocco, are they maintaining the law on behalf of Moorish subjects as well?
Yes.
They should be enforcing the law on behalf of Moorish subjects as well. But we must all understand that the Kingdom of Morocco is a state-provincial government, that the Moroccan Empire is vast, and the Kingdom of Morocco, as it appears, is only looking out for its citizens, subjects of its own state-provincial government. So yes, are they looking out? Yeah, because they signed the Vienna Convention. But how does that relate to the Moorish subjects of what's commonly known as North America? Because we're a part of the Moroccan Empire. So the answer is also no, they're not looking out for us. Because they don't talk about Moors. They talk about Moroccans. But they never say the word Moor or Moorish. So you must understand, mother, there's some conspiracy going on. We'll talk about that another day, alright?
F, contracting state means a state which has consented to be bound by the treaty, whether or not the treaty has entered into force.
Watch this, thank you, mother. Contracting state means a state which has consented to be bound by the treaty. Moors want to be bound by the treaty? They want the colonists to be bound by the treaty? Guess what? Moors need to have a state. They have no choice, the instructions are clear. You want to contract with the colonists? Because you want to talk contract. What's the contract? The treaty. So your contract, soon as you mention the word treaty, you're talking contract. Moors, where's your state? The instructions are clear. You want to talk contracts, i.e. treaty? Then you must follow international law. You must have a state. Let's continue.
G, party means a state which has consented to be bound by the treaty and for which the treaty is enforced.
Alright. The parties must be known in all contracts. All contracts start off, the first thing they say is the parties. Then they go into whatever linear entry of that contract. Okay, watch this. The parties should be the Moorish state versus the United States of America. Why? Because those are the parties on the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1786. Is Morocco, United States of America. Understanding Morocco is the Moors, right there in the treaty, it talks about the Moors. You cannot talk about being a party to the treaty unless you have a state, and that state must have elected representatives that have checked the boxes. Moors' concepts have been flawed. I get it, we've been trying to fix some stuff, but we have been putting a cart in front of a horse, that's the truth. So now we must follow international law. If in fact, we want to be a party, until then, we are incompetent. We're still Moorish subjects instead of Moorish nationals. You can only be a national of the state. Until then, you're still a Moor subject, that's the truth. Let's continue, mother.
H, third state means a state, not a party to that treaty.
Okay, this is a simple one. So a third state means that party is not applicable to the treaty, right? We're gonna learn a lot today about third state. Remember what I tell you, make a side note. The United States is what you call a third state. That's the truth. We'll talk about that today. The United States Corporation District of Columbia is a third state. Why do I say that? Because the Treaty of Peace and Friendship between who? The United States of America and Morocco, not the United States. We'll talk about that today. Okay, let's read now Section 9.
I, international organization means an intergovernmental organization.
Okay, that's an easy one, that's just international organization. So they're talking about United Nations as a charter, is an organization, alright? Okay, alright, no, number 2.
The provision of paragraph 1 regarding the use of terms in the present convention or without prejudice to the use of those terms or to the meaning which may be given to them in the internal law of any state.
So, in order to enforce the provisions of paragraph 1, you must have a state. Why do they keep... Why do they keep talking about the state? Because it's international law. Moors have to follow international law. Okay, let's go to article three, alright? So we have a different mother read article three.
Article three, international agreements not within the scope of the present convention. The fact that the present convention does not apply to international agreements. Concluded between states and other subjects of international law are between such other subjects of international law. Or to international agreements not in written form shall not affect.
Okay, let's continue. So they're going to go into sections A, B, and C, okay? Alright, so section eight, mother.
A, the legal force of such agreements.
Okay.
B, the application to them of any of the rules set forth in the present convention to which. They would be subject under international law independently of the convention. C, the application of the convention to the relations of states as between themselves under international agreements. To which other subjects of international law are also parties.
Watch this. Most people don't understand truly what article three is all about. I will tell you today what article three is about. International agreements not within the scope of the present convention. Watch this. The fact that the present convention does not apply to international agreements. Concluded between states and other subjects of international law or between such other subjects of international law. Or to international agreements not in written form. Shall not affect, so what they happened, what's happening? So you must understand law and history. Toshri Bay teaches us all the time, you must study law and history, what happened? The United States of America. In the Act of Congress eighteen seventy-one. Dissolved the United States of America. Is now officially operating through what's called the United States. I'll say it again. The United States of America, who's a party to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-six. Dissolved the United States of America and created a new government and constitution for the United States District of Columbia. So what you must understand under article three, the United Nations is saying. The United States is not a party to any treaty. Only the United States of America, two separate entities. Watch this. Okay. Okay, so what's happening? Section A, watch this. A legal force of such agreements, what agreements? See, there's no agreement of the United States and Morocco in a treaty. It's only the United States of America and Morocco in a treaty. There is no treaty with the United States and Morocco, it doesn't exist. So therefore, article three is covering saying, the United States, under your fraud. You created a new government so that you can undermine your obligations to the Moors. Because you're obligated on the United States of America, but you created the United States, we're going to prove that in just a moment. Section B, the application to them or any other rule set forth in the present convention to which they would be subject under international law independently of the convention. So what they're trying to say right there is, even though the United States created. Or should I say, even though the United States of America created the United States? You know what the United Nations is saying? The United Nations, you're going to be obligated to those treaties no matter what you say or do to try to avoid your obligations to the Moors. Watch this, section C. The applic- application of the convention to the relations of states between themselves under international agreements to which. Other subjects of international law are also parties. So therefore, all parties are obligated to treaties. Even if they try to create some separate entity in order to get themselves out of a treaty. They creating aka, they still obligated. They try to create a doing business as, they still obligated on the original name. Now watch this. I better prove that what I just said. I don't like to stand here and talk without reference points. I'll give you a reference point, watch this. We're going to come back to this, but watch this. Now let's go over to the Act of Congress. Eighteen seventy-one. For a reference point is what you call the forty-first Congress, session three, chapter sixty-two for the people at home, alright? We're going to read the reference point. Listen, we're going to read the reference point that the United States of America. Created a brand-new government that's got a constitution for the United States, two separate entities. Through an act of Congress. They created- created a fraud. In order to undermine the Moors and un- undermine all their treaties that they had in the year eighteen seventy-one, watch this. Let's go down to section one, under section uh, article, excuse me, chapter sixty-two. So you see chapter LX one-one was the rolling numerical numbers? So we can have the mothers read chapter sixty-two aloud, that would be great, starting with the title itself, reference point.
An act to provide a government for the District of Columbia.
Stop, that's the title right off the top. What are they doing?
An act.
It's an act. To do what? Provide a government, for what? District of Columbia. Wait a minute, I thought you already had a government, the United States of America. You must already start understanding what's happening here. They're committing fraud, they can already create a totally different government. Keep it in mind, District of Columbia is Washington DC, ten miles square. Where you have all the three branches of so-called government, although they ain't governed no more, they're private foreign corporations. They're no longer public governments. Aren't they public no more? I'm about to prove it. Okay, mother, continue reading, please.
Be it enacted by the Senate and House of Representative- Representatives of the United States of America in Congress assembled.
Continue me.
That all that part of the territory of the United States included within the limits of the District of Columbia. Be and the same is hereby created into a government by the Columbia.
Right, District of Columbia.
By the name of the District of Columbia, by which name it is hereby constituted a body corporate. For municipal purposes and may contract and be contracted with suit and be sued. Plead and be impeded, have a seal and exercise all other powers of a municipal corporation. Not inconsistent with the Constitution and law of the United States and the provisions of this act.
Okay, watch this. Let's break it down in the strict sense. That way we have an understanding, overstanding, and we will also get an understanding real quick. This is what you call an act of Congress with a pen, it's fraud, watch this. First things first, be it enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America, so first thing they do is tell you the party that's doing it. Is the United States of America. And Congress assembled, act of Congress case, stop right there. So first things first, we got to understand. That the United States of America's Congress created the United States. Not only they created the United States, they created a constitution for the United States. They admitted right here, last sentence. It says. Where it says plead and be impeded, let's start there. Plead and be impeded, have a seal, they created a seal. And exercise other powers of municipal corporations, the United States of Corporation. Not inconsistent with the Constitution and laws of the United States. The United States has a constitution, the constitution of the United States. The United States has a constitution, no more the United States of America, that must be known. Alright, let's go on to now. Section nine.
And be it further enacted that members of the Leg- the Legislative Assembly, before they enter upon their official duties. Shall take and subscribe the following oath or affirmation.
Stop, now pay attention. Now you can already learn what oath, all these so-called officers take of the United States. And all the several states take this same oath. Watch this, continue, mother.
Quote-unquote, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Stop. Support the Constitution of the United States, support the Constitution of the United States, support the Constitution, United States. Wait a minute, I thought they're the United States of America. I thought they already had a constitution of seventeen eighty-nine. Oh, they just created a new constitution in eighteen seventy-one, for why? That way they don't have to maintain the obligations to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-six with the Moors, that's why. They're trying to get out of their obligations. These people are chiefly British, trying to get out of obligations to Moors. Let's continue.
I will support the Constitution of the United States and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter. And that I have not knowingly or intentionally paid or contributed anything or made any promise. In the nature of a bribe to directly or indirectly influence any vote at the election at which I was chosen to fill. The said office. And have not accepted nor will I accept or receive directly or indirectly any money. Or other valuable thing for any vote or influence that I may give or withhold on any bill. Resolution or appropriation or for any other official act. Any member.
Unquote.
Vote.
Alright, so unquote. So right then and there, what have we learned? Let's go over to it, go through it quite quickly. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, not the United States of America. That must be known. That's their oath. But the United States is not a party to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-six. Who's a party to Treaty of Pe- Peace and Friendship eight night of eighteen? Excuse me, of seventeen eighty-six?
United States of America.
And who?
And Morocco.
That is correct. Not the United States, United States? United States of America, two separate entities, United States of America, United States, two separate entities. The United States of America trying to get out of their obligations to Moors. Let's continue on to article. Eighteen.
And be it further enacted that the legislative power of the district shall extend to all rightful subjects of legislation. Within said district. Constant with the Constitution.
Consistent, consistent.
Consistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Stop. Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States, not the United States of America, the United States of America's been dissolved because the United States of America created. A new government that has a constitution. Continue, mother.
Consistent with the um, Constitution of the United States and that. And the provisions of this act subject nevertheless to all the restrictions and limitations imposed upon states. By the tenth section of the first article of the Constitution of the United States.
So it's what? The Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States, not the Constitution of the United States of America, it's been dissolved. They created a new government, let's continue.
But all acts of the Legislative Assembly shall at all times be subject to re- repeal. Our modification by the Congress of the United States. And nothing herein shall be construed to deprive Congress of the power of legislation. Over said district in an ample manner as if this law had not been enacted.
So the law had been enacted to create a new government. Alright, let's go now to section thirty-one as another reference point. Okay, mother, if I can have you read section thirty-one as a reference point to prove that the United States has a constitution, alright?
And it be further enacted that the governor, secretary, and other officers to be appointed pursuant to this act. Shall before they act as such respectively take and subscribe an oath or affirmation. Before a judge of the Supreme Court of the District of Columbia. Or some justice of the peace in the limits of said district. Duly authorized to administer oaths or affirmations by the laws now enforced therein or before.
Stop. So now, they're maintaining laws are now enforced therein. They're enforcing new laws, they just created a new government that has a constitution, and the name of that new government is. The United States, and it has a constitution. I'll prove it, watch what they say, continue.
Enforced therein are before the chief justice or some associate justice of the Supreme Court of the United States. To support the Constitution of the United States.
Stop. They're just admitting that fraud. It says. That before the chief justice of some or some associate justice of the Supreme Court of the United States. Not the United States of America, the United States of Supreme Court is also complicit in this fraud. You must understand, there are no more public judges, they're all private. Citizens. Foreigners of a corporation called the United States. And they have a constitution, what do they say? To support the Constitution of the United States, they say it verbatim right there. There is no more Constitution of the United States of America that they can enforce, let me be clear. The colonists can't enforce the Constitution of the United States of America no more because they created a new government. It's fraud. Continue, mother.
Support the Constitu- Constitution of the United States and faithfully to discharge the duties of their respective offices. Which said oath, when so taken, shall be certified by the person before whom the same shall have been taken. And such certificates shall be received and recorded by the said secretary among the executive proceedings. And all civil officers in said district. Before they act. As such, shall take and subscribe a like oath or affirmation before the said governor or secretary. Or some judge or justice of the peace of the district court. Who may duly commissioned and qualified are before the chief justice of the Supreme Court of the United States.
Who? Stop. Who? Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of the United States. If you look at all their documents from the Supreme Court. They all say, talking federal, alleged federal, which is not a public office, it's a private office. By a foreign corp- private corporation. It'll say Supreme Court of the United States. Continue, mother.
Which said oath or affirmation shall be certified and transmitted by the person administering the same to the secretary. To be by him recorded as aforesaid and afterward. The like oath or affirmation shall be taken and subscribed. Certified and recorded in such manner and form as may be prescribed by law.
Alright, now watch this. I've already proven by their own record. They've taken an oath to the United States, not the United States of America, but wait a minute. You have naysayers out there saying, I made this up, even though we just read it verbatim. Let me give you more proof, watch this, reference point. Alright, listen, reference point.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Joseph Robinette Biden Junior do solemnly swear.
I Joseph Robinette Biden Junior do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The office of President of the United States.
Office of President of the United States.
And will to the best of my ability.
Will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. President.
Joe Biden took an oath and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, not the United States of America. Why? Because the United States of America has been dissolved. Why has it been dissolved? So the colonists feel as though they are not obligated to the treaties of peace and friendship with the Moors. That must be understood. Now watch this. Some people say, "Well, I didn't like Joe Biden in the first place." Let's listen to another president. Watch this. Okay, now we're gonna watch another president. But before they bring up the next president of the private foreign corporation, listen to who's gonna come up first to administer the oath to show you the conspiracy of the fraud of these alleged judges, that are not judges. They're administrative clerks on behalf of a corporation. Listen.
Introduce the Chief Justice of the United States, John G. Roberts Junior.
So he's the chief justice of what? The United States, not the United States of America. Listen.
Who'll administer the presidential oath of office. Everyone, please stand.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Donald John Trump, do solemnly swear.
I, Donald John Trump, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The office of President of the United States.
The office of President of the United States.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So what did we learn today? We learned that the United States has a constitution that they swear allegiance to. We learned by their own reference points that under Act of Congress eighteen seventy-one, Chapter sixty-two, that the United States of America created another government. Why? To undermine the Moors, to undermine the treaties. That must be known. That must be known. Okay, so let's talk solutions. What's the solution? The Moors must start understanding international law. Okay, now watch this. Let's get back to the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine. Article Three. We're gonna bring it all together now. I just showed you the Act of Congress eighteen seventy-one. Now I'm gonna show you what Article Three really means of the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine. It's gonna make sense to you. Now watch this. Go ahead, mother.
International agreements not within the scope of the present convention. The fact that the present convention does not apply to international agreements concluded between states and other subjects of international law or between such other subjects of international law or to international agreements not in written form.
Stop. My phone still on? Okay, 'cause when I heard that being, I thought you'd come down. Okay. Continue.
Does not apply to international agreements concluded within states and other subjects of international law or between such other subjects of international law or to international agreements not in written form shall not affect.
So watch this. So the United States created a different government to get from underneath the treaties. So it would not affect what? What they did would not affect what? Continue, mother.
The legal force of such agreements.
Uh-huh. Okay, mother, so read Section A.
Section A, the legal force of such agreements.
So stop. What does that mean? Because the United States tried to undermine the treaties of peace and friendship of seventeen eighty-six and all the Moroccan treaties by creating a new government. The United Nations say, "That ain't gonna work. You're still obligated, even though you tried to pull a fast one, it will not work because those treaties are still enforced." All right? Section B, mother.
The application to them of any of the rules set forth in the present convention to which they would be subject under international law independently of the convention.
So therefore, you must understand, the United States corporation is still obligated to the United States of America treaty they have with Moors, even though they independently created Act of Congress eighteen seventy-one. Go ahead, mother. Section C.
The application of the Con- of the convention to the relations of states as between themselves under international agreements to which other subjects of international law are also parties.
Okay, so therefore, the United States of America is in multilateral treaties with other nations, including Morocco, but they pulled a fast one and created the United States, but they still obligated to said treaties on the United States of America. Now you must understand by the United States of America, when you see them on an international platform, that placard in front of them will say, "United States of America." But everybody knows, they ain't the United States of America no more. The only people that don't know that is these people who think everybody's a crayon. That is the truth. All right? Okay, let's go ahead and read, um, let's go down to Article Seven.
One. Article seven, full powers. One, a person is considered as representing a state for the purpose of adopting or authenticating the text of a treaty or for the purpose of expressing the consent of the state to be bound by a treaty if, A, he produces appropriate full power, powers, or B, it appears from the practice of the state's concern or from other circumstances that their intention was to consider that person as representing the state for such powers.
Purposes.
Such purposes and to dispense with full powers.
Okay. Thank you, mother. Watch this. Article seven, Moors want full powers? Watch this. A person is considered a, a representing a state for the purpose of adopting or authenticating the text of a treaty. Moors wanna read the treaty to the colonists, i.e. me, they trying to authenticate it? I.e. me, they trying to adopt it and use it as a means of defense? Can't do it unless you have a state. Watch this. For the purposes of what? Expressing the consent of the state to be bound by a treaty. The Moors keep trying to say, "The United States is bound." Okay, Moors, where is the Moors state? We must be bound too. Two nations are bound. But the United States, even though it's a private corporation, is still acting like a state. It's what you call a de facto state. It's called a fact that they have a state, but it ain't true. But Moors don't have nothing. Ampac has a state, but let's talk about the other Moors that are really Moors subjects until they have a state that makes them Moors nationals. Then they can talk to these de facto privateers versus Moors nationals that are de jure, because they have a state, all right? Continue, mother. Let's read, uh, Section Two of Article Seven.
Section two, in virtue of their functions and without having to produce full powers, the following are considered as representing the state. A, heads of state, heads of government and ministers for foreign affairs for the purpose of performing all acts relating to the conclusion of a treaty. B, heads of diplomatic missions for the purpose of adopting the text of a treaty between the accrediting state and a state to which they are accredited. C, representatives accredited by states to an international conference or to an international organization or one of its organs for the purpose of adopting the text of a treaty in that conference, organization, or organ.
So what are we learning? The word state should be a part of our vernacular as Moors. We must understand in order to have full powers, we must have a state, and that state has its own representatives. Elected representatives, not self-appointed. Through what? Their constitution. All right? Okay, so let's stop right there because that's enough reference points in turn. We can go deeper into the, uh, Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine. But the very least, Moors must understand Article One, Article Two, Article Three, Article Seven, which talks about full powers. That must be understood as we continue to read all the Articles one through eighty-five. We won't do that, but Moors at home should read all the Articles one through eighty-five. It gives you the instructions. That way we can start maintaining our obligations to treaties and being competent Moors. Competitive Moors. Now watch this. Moors will tell you, "You should proclaim your nationality." Sounds good, Moors. Most Moors have already checked the box, but guess what? There's more boxes, Moors, and that's the truth.
Grand evening. I am Kanye Chauvet, Mufti Attorney General for Ampac.